Polar puppy living at the North Pole. He's silly, he's silly, he's living at the North Pole. Santa's best friend living at the North Pole. He's icy, he's icy, he's living at the North Pole. What's a puppy doing there? It's really kind of cold. He's hanging out with a reindeer there. He's really kind of cold. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Polar puppy living at the North Pole. He's silly, he's silly, he's living at the North Pole. Santa's best friend living at the North Pole. He's icy, he's icy, he's living at the North Pole. Where's his likes, the snow and ice? He's such a silly pup. Don't try to pick him up away. He'll never give it up. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Woo!
Good evening, everybody. Can I have a motion to open the meeting? Moved by Commissioner High-Cubbert. Seconded by Commissioner Berkeley. All in favor? So the school board meeting on Tuesday, December 12th, is officially open. Would ask if people could rise and have the presentation of colors from Murgenthaler Vocational Technical High School.
Colors. All. Carrying. Colors. Left. Base. Ma'am. Cadet Lieutenant Parham from Mervo High School requests a message to present the colors. Colors. Reverse. Color guard. All. Freezing. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose watch rise then brights forth through the perilous swat? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. O'er the skies the stars sang, "Better than ever!" O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Color guard. Order. Colors. Colors. All.
So I want to thank our students from JROTC at Mervo. Cadet Lieutenant Kyle Parham. Cadet Chief Petty Officer Promise Cannon. Cadet Chief Petty Officer Ayu La Wakatin. Allo Kwame. Cadet Chief Petty Officer Laquan Jefferson. Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Daniel White King. I'd also like to thank our student performers from Abbotsen Elementary School Chorus with Ariel Worshing Director. Thanks to Desiree Allen. Ma'keah Allen. Miles Baker. Zion Bell. Ziron Bell. Rashad Eagleston. Jamira Ellis. Daron Hart. Psych Hogan. Taria Hughes. Paradise Irving. Jaleel Jackson. Trazia Lee. Karan Murdock. Ron Di Murphy. Kaitlin Newkirk. Dejonte Poole. Jude Sen. Tavion Stewart. Leonard Stokes Jr. Melody Street. Genesis Tamaris Guzman. Noelani Watchers. And Deasia Woodard. Thank you very much. I'd like to take the time to recognize the passing of three of our city school students. Ashley?
Yes. So the first student that we would like to speak about would be David Villalobos. Was a fourth grader from Marie G. Ferring. He was a friend to many and a scholar in all of his classes. He was always helping his classmates during group work. David loved superheroes like The Flash and Batman. He was an avid reader, devouring books from the library every week. David loved learning about volcanoes and playing video games with his friends. He will be missed by his friends, family, and school community. Larry Brown came to Excel Academy this school year as a 10th grader from Edmiston Westside High School, where he had been attending for the past two years. He enjoyed spending time with his peers and will be missed by his family and friends. Stephen Cook came to Excel Academy this school year as an 11th grader from KASA. In his short time at Excel, he made a positive impact on his peers and teachers. He had a smile that would warm your heart, and he was always respectful. He often spoke of his mother and his love for her. Stephen will be truly missed by his peers, teachers, families, and friends. If we can now have a moment of silence?
Thank you, Ashley. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of prior open session meeting. Moved by Commissioner High-Cubbert. Seconded by Commissioner Berkeley. All in favor? Commissioners Peña, Berkeley, Hassan is not here, absent. High-Cubbert, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, and Bondima. Seven approve, three absent. I'd like to have a motion to approve prior closed session summaries. Moved by Commissioner High-Cubbert. Seconded by Commissioner Chinia. All in favor? Commissioner Berkeley, High-Cubbert, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Six approve, three absent, one abstain. We will now have reports from board committee meetings. Although the board committee meetings are all public meetings, we encourage people to attend if they can. But just to give you some idea, while I look up my notes. Let's see, sorry. Linda, are you ready for... Can you do teaching and learning?
Teaching and learning has not met for... Not meeting this month. We meet again in January, on the 23rd of January, in this room at 9:00 a.m.
So you didn't have a November meeting?
We reported on that meeting previously.
Okay. Yes. Policy, please.
Same for the policy committee. Martha's the chair, but she's not here. We have our meeting coming up on the 19th of December at 3:30 in this room. So we'll have our next meeting at that time.
And the next operations committee meeting is December 19th. In board chair, I want to make just a couple of comments and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner High-Cubbert. First, I want to acknowledge a gift of $2,500 towards staff support at Hamilton Elementary Middle School from MeQ. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry to make this report, but this will be... We're losing AJ as our board executive officer. AJ has been with us for a couple of years now, AJ? Two and a half? A little more, two and a half years? And he has been a tremendous support to the board. He's changed the way the board meetings interact with the public. We don't want AJ to leave, but he has a tremendous new opportunity to run a trial advocacy program at St. Mary's College in San Antonio, Texas. So we are happy for his opportunity and sorry for our loss. And on behalf of the board, can't thank you enough for how much of a pleasure it has been to work with you. So thank you very much, AJ.
Awesome, Martha.
Good. Madam Chair, I would like to add on behalf of the staff that I will say that AJ has raised the level of the board office interaction with staff to just a whole new level of professionalism, all for the better. And I can't say enough how large AJ's shoes are going to be to fill. But I want you to know from all of the staff, particularly those who work most closely with you, we have appreciated both the rigor, the professionalism, the reflection, and the consideration that you have brought to this position, and you've helped make our work better as a result of it. So we will miss you, my friend.
Thanks, AJ. I'd like to turn it over to Tina to welcome guest speaker.
Make sure you want to come forward. So the board is going to do something a bit... We've done a piecemeal before, but we're going to try something new of having board members suggest partners who are really critical to the work of city schools, whether it be in the classroom or outside of the classroom, present on what they're doing to support us in our work, to make sure all the needs of our kids are met and they're being successful as possible. And since this is one of my last meetings as a board member, I asked if I could go first. So in my other life, my other non-paid life, I am a homeless advocate in the city. I just recently co-chaired the Journey Home COC Board and then recently chaired the Mayor's Task Force on homeless issues. And Monisha Shorail was a part of Justice Center, was one of those folks who are active in that work. And we've asked her to come talk today about the work that is around youth homelessness and what's happening in the city and what supports are available. And so I will turn it over to Monisha, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you Commissioner High-Cubbert and the chair and the entire board for having me tonight to speak about homeless students in city schools. My time is short, so I'll summarize wherever possible, but you should have copies of the presentation, and I welcome any questions. When we call a student homeless, what do we mean? The legal definition of the term, as it applies in the school setting, is very broad. It refers to all children and youth who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. And that includes not just those who may fit our traditional images of a homeless individual or family, those who are in shelters or living out of cars, but also the majority of young people who are homeless are actually doubled up or couch surfing with relatives, friends, strangers. And they may be with an intact family, or they may be on their own. Homeless students face a number of barriers to their attendance and achievement in school, even beyond the anxiety that comes with the lack of a stable home. They may move frequently, and we know that when those moves also translate into school transfers, they can lose months of academic progress at a time. They may not have the paperwork normally required to enroll in school, or even a parent or guardian to assist with that process. And they may be fearful to be reported to authorities or otherwise have their circumstances exposed. Now, the law requires school systems to proactively identify these students, recognizing that oftentimes they won't identify themselves, and affirmatively review their policies and practices to remove even those unintended barriers to their academic success. Now, more specifically, the law guarantees homeless students, among other things, the right to stay in the same school with transportation to that school even as they move from place to place, or to enroll immediately in a new school even if they're missing paperwork, any paperwork that is required, and even if they don't have a parent or a guardian to participate in that process. And guarantees them school uniforms, waivers of school fees, waivers of certain deadlines, to ensure that these types of policies or requirements do not keep them out of school or stigmatize them. It provides for a dispute resolution process. So if there's a disagreement between a student or his family and a school as to where he should attend or what services a student should get, that family should get a written decision and the opportunity to appeal, including to the CEO, up to this board, and even up to the state board. And the student gets a stay in their chosen school with transportation during that process. And the final example I'll give for today is the law also requires that every school district have a liaison whose job it is to make sure that all of these protections and others are provided at a system-wide level and to troubleshoot those individual issues that come up. And we see that when school districts have comprehensively and effectively implemented these protections, there are measurable positive outcomes for homeless students in terms of their achievement scores and graduation rates. PJC has been working on these issues in the context of city schools since the 2010-11 school year, during which we co-chaired a student school stability work group with the district and included stakeholders from throughout the community and throughout the school system to identify challenges and come up with solutions. And the end result was a series of findings and recommendations approved by the then-CEO, Dr. Alonso. Since that time, we've seen some notable progress, including the enactment of a board policy and regulation governing identification of enrollment of and services to homeless students, and the hiring of a full-time homeless education liaison. Alan Blackwell, who I know is here tonight, we do have a great relationship with him and his team when it comes to serving individual students. That being said, there are also a number of persistent challenges, in some cases the same challenges we've seen from seven years ago. You'll see that the schools, as a matter of standard practice, take seven to 10 days to arrange transportation for homeless elementary students. And oftentimes, it takes much longer, weeks even. And kids are missing school during that time as a result, or parents are scrounging up money, borrowing from friends and family, you know, that cash they don't have. Oftentimes, school-based staff and even district office staff don't have the training they need to be able to identify homeless students or know what protections they should be getting and go ahead and apply those protections. There's no real mechanism, no consistent mechanism across schools for monitoring homeless students' progress on a consistent basis and making sure they don't fall through the cracks as they often do. And then although the homeless education liaison certainly, we believe, is committed to these issues and resolving them at the individual and systemic level, we know that success requires collaboration and leadership from multiple departments. And when departments are not all engaged in this work, it makes success very difficult to achieve. So the next couple of slides, just run through some of the data provided to me by the compliance office in response to a PIA request. It was a big request, and certainly they were very gracious in sharing the information. You can review this on your own, but the general trend you'll see is that homeless students lag behind their peers, even other low-income peers across the board when it comes to chronic absenteeism or test scores or discipline issues. And here, I'll just highlight one bullet point. You see that there's only been six cases since the board policy was enacted in which the dispute resolution process was actually used, even though we know there's been many other times when there's been disagreement. So that tells us that families aren't always being informed, and really, it seems to be only the PJC clients that sort of pursue this process. And then, of course, budget, as with all things, is a perennial challenge. Transportation is very expensive for these students, particularly because they may be getting, you know, transported to schools that are out of their zone or even, you know, potentially out of the district. And so that's a real cost. At the same time, we know that we're not accessing as a district all the funding and resources that may be available to us, for example, the McKinney-Vento sub-grant. And finally, I'll leave you with some suggested leadership-level solutions for your consideration. We also have a sort of a whole array of ideas when it comes to very specific problem-solving strategies to be implemented by staff that we see as more low-hanging fruit. But this is a summary of what we think could really strengthen this process, system-wide. You know, we are so appreciative that the board is interested and engaged in the issue, and we'd love to see that continue. I'll also acknowledge that we had a really terrific meeting last week with the new director of Whole Child Services and Support, as well as the homeless education team. And that kind of collaboration with outside partners, I think, is an opportunity to address problems and provide high-level direction. We're also delighted to report that we understand that the district has formed a transportation work group to address, you know, one of the core challenges we see, as well as transportation issues affecting other students, and we're delighted to be a part of that. So, you know, those are some systems-level solutions. We're glad to see that there may be some interest in pursuing those together. And we'd love to see that continue, including sort of here at the board level. So with that, you know, I'll close my presentation and invite... And let me just acknowledge, too, a number of the partners I work with in the community and shelters and homeless-serving agencies are here tonight, you know, because this issue is so important to them and the families they serve. But with that, I'll wrap up and invite any questions that you all have. Tina?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Monisha, for coming forward and speaking today. And I was part of that last meeting we had with Sarah Warren, who's the office of the Whole Child. And I just have to say it was great to have the advocates and staff talking together, sort of highlighting whatever concerns we might have and finding reasonable solutions, sort of short-term ones we can address right now, and then acknowledging things we need to work on as partners. So I appreciate that level of partnership, that it's not always about finger pointing, but it's about figuring out where our collective concerns lie and how we can resolve them together. So I want to thank you and your team for coming in and meeting with us. And I look forward to continuing working with you on that as an outside partner to the board.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. With that, I want to turn to the approval of the consent agenda on the personnel and quasi-judicial matters. Can I have a motion to approve the PEP agenda and the three appeals and hearings cases? Moved by Commissioner High-Cubbert. Seconded by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Commissioner Berkeley, High-Cubbert, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Six approve, three absent? And one abstain, sorry. With that, I'd like to turn it to Dr. Santelisis.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kashani. And right now, it is my pleasure to be able to introduce a longtime partner with Baltimore Public Schools. And one of the things that makes partnerships so important, and I think are the best partners, are those who understand the need to engage young people, to help improve their academics, but to do it in a way that give them kind of real-life application opportunities. I will say that the Baltimore Debate League was founded in 1999 with the support of the Open Society Institute and Baltimore, and is now the nation's flagship urban debate league. This year, Bootle will engage more than 700 of our young people and 50 teachers from nearly 40 elementary and middle schools across Baltimore City. Now, I will admit that I am biased. As a former debater and the daughter of a former debater, I automatically gravitate towards Bootle's mission. But what makes Bootle so powerful at this particular point in time is that without trying, they really keyed into the heart of what the city school's blueprint is really about. And student voice is one of our primary focal points in our work to develop the whole child. And it is the work that the Urban Debate League does to not only give students voice, but to teach them the critical skills that not only apply to being successful in a university setting, but being able to make one's points known, to do it, and to substantiate our arguments in real scholarly ways that actually have practical application to the kinds of rules and policies that impact all of our lives. So it is why I am very, very pleased to welcome Colleen Reyes, who's Executive Director of Bootle, as well as Giselle Hernandez and Danielle McIntosh, two of city schools' debaters from Glenmount Elementary Middle School, who will give you a taste of the power of debate for schools here in Baltimore City. Welcome, Colleen.
Yes. I'm not going to say as much there, but I will say more than I will. Yes. So, good evening. Thank you for having me. I am delighted to be here. I have been with the Baltimore Urban Debate League for five and a half years, as Executive Director for two years, and we have seen a tremendous amount of growth this year. We went from 18 elementary middle schools to almost 40 this year. Just two weekends ago, we had almost 250 students spend their Saturday debating. And so our two students here today are going to give you a sample of what that looks like. It takes almost an hour, so they're going to do it in five minutes. But you can see them create their arguments, have a little interaction through questions, and then rebut what the other argument says. All right. Who's up first? Ready? All right.
Good afternoon, judges, fellow debaters, family... Oh, okay. Good afternoon, judges, fellow debaters, family and friends. My name is Giselle Hernandez, and I attend Glamour Elementary Middle School. Resolve. The state of Maryland should drastically curtail... Resolve: The state of Maryland should drastically curtail standardized testing for public school students in grades K to 12. Judge, I have one reason why I strongly agree that standardized testing should be here to stay. Reason number one: Middle school suicide doubles as common core testing intensifies. Marion Bradley tells a gaudwrenchy story about her son failing the FCAT, Florida Comprehensive Assessment Test, by one point. The note said that he had to take a reading class over and a retest. We weren't alarmed as he only had to score one more point to be promoted. A few weeks later, she received a call from her teacher's son that he has failed the FCAT by one point again. He's... I didn't tell him, but the next day, he told me that he had failed because if he had passed, he would have been celebrating. I told him to come down to the... I asked him if what he wanted to drink was his dinner. No response. I figured he was watching TV in his room and hadn't heard. A few minutes later, I called again. No response. I can't tell you what came over me. I just had a sick feeling. I threw the hot pans and my hand on the counter and ran down the hall. There was my perfect nine-year-old freckled son with a belt around his neck hanging from a post on his bunk bed. His eyes would blink, his lips blew, his face emotionless. I don't know how I had the strength to hoist him up and get the belt off him, but I did. Then I collapsed on the floor, and I held him as close to my heart as possible. There were no words. He didn't speak, and for the life of me, I couldn't either. I was physically unable to form words. I shook as I held him, and I felt his heart racing. I'd saved him. No, not really. I saved him physically, but mentally, he was destroyed.
Are there other factors that contribute to students committing suicide other than standardized testing?
There are other factors that may lead to students committing suicide, but standardized testing is one of the key factors because as common core testing intensifies, the suicide rate has increased. So there has to be some type of connection upon those two topics.
But just because two things happen at the same time doesn't mean that one necessarily caused the other. So how could you necessarily be sure that standardized testing is the reason for increasing suicides?
Well, this, as I said, this little boy, he took his life on this Florida Comprehensive Assessment Test because he had failed it by one point. How do you think that other students would feel if they had failed it from 50 points? He only failed it by one point, and it's because of this test.
Hello, Judge, fellow debaters, family and friends. My name is Danielle McIntosh, and I attend Glenmount Elementary Middle School. We have all heard of the pros and cons of standardized testing, but today, I am here to argue in pros and how they heavily outweigh the cons. One reason as to why I strongly stand with the resolution as to why Maryland should not drastically curtail standardized testing for public schools in grades K through 12. If standardized testing doesn't cause anxiety or serious cases of suicide. Resolve: The state of Maryland should not drastically curtail standardized testing for public schools in grades K through 12. According to AFSP, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide most occurs when stressors exceed current coping abilities for someone suffering with a mental health condition. Now, students may have taken their lives over test scores, and there is no denying that. But the tests themselves aren't exactly what cause people to commit suicide. And what I mean by this is, people just don't decide one day they are going to seriously harm themselves. The test might have just been the turning point or the trigger that causes them to harm themselves. Now, taking away standardized testing isn't the way to solve suicide rates among young teens, and here's why. Instead of taking away the test, teachers, administrators, parents, and even fellow students need to do a better job in noticing stress in young teens, such as depression, antisocialness, emotional episodes, mood swings, being distant, and even talking about suicidal actions. Making the school a safe environment and a place where students can go to an adult, such as a counselor, to talk about their feelings will help reduce the suicide rate. Taking away the test may seem like a good way to handle the suicide rates among young teens, but even while you take away the test, you still have these emotions and struggles of everyday life that accumulate to a too much for a child to handle. And even if standardized tests aren't the stressor for students to harm themselves, then sadly, something else will be. So on that end, you get nowhere. And to conclude, the state of Maryland should not drastically curtail standardized testing for public schools in grades K through 12.
If standardized testing isn't the cause of suicide among teens, what do you think will be a cause?
It could be, like I said, accumulation of a lot of things, such as stress from home, their peers, things such as that.
Okay. Wouldn't standardized testing cause stress as well? So wouldn't that be a cause of suicide as well?
Yes, but I'm arguing that it's not the main...
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, but I'm arguing that it's not the main cause of stress and anxiety amongst students.
Okay, thank you. So as you see, we're not talking about anything light, fluffy. We're talking about real things that are impacting our young people's lives. So we are arguing or we are debating if the state of Maryland should drastically curtail standardized testing in K-12 education. There's a debate to be had. I mean, as an education nerd myself, we talk about it all the time. So our students are going to do a 30-second rebuttal saying why their argument is right and the other argument is not right.
Hello again, Judge, family and friends, fellow debaters. To reinforce my claims, the state of Maryland should not drastically curtail standardized testing for public schools in grades K through 12. Reasons why, my main reason as to why I stand by this is standardized testing doesn't cause anxiety or serious cases of suicide. But along with this, standardized testing is also the only way to accurately measure students' performance, and not only measuring students' performance, but it also measures the school. That is why I strongly stand by the claim that the state of Maryland should not drastically curtail standardized testing for grades K through 12.
Hello, Judge, again. My name is Giselle Hernandez, and I am here to argue that standardized testing should be here to stay. The state of Maryland should drastically curtail standardized testing for public school students in grades K to 12. I believe this because standardized testing can lead to harmful things and to students. It may even cause suicide, and suicide isn't a game to be played with. It isn't like Monopoly where you win or you lose, but in this case, you will lose. And today, I am here to say that standardized testing should be... should not... should be drastically curtailed, but not like curtailed or should not be. It should be drastically curtailed because it can lead to harmful things in students.
So thank you for having us. I just want to say, we work with teachers to do this, and we wouldn't be able to do it without them. Thank you for having us.
Oh, are there any questions from the Board?
I actually don't know how many schools this is happening and how can we spread it to more schools?
It's a great question. So this year, we have 36 active schools, and I have to go knock on schools' doors every year. So getting principals to think this is a good idea and then sign on is exactly how we make it happen in more schools.
And do schools have a cost that they pay for...
They do. They cover the coach's stipend. I've changed the model dramatically, yes.
You know, we all sort of experience a coarsening of debate in society, unfortunately. And I'm curious, how do you sort of make students aware of that in society and contrast it with a kind of discipline and approach that you take?
So we use a lot of equations. We use a lot of equations. And we have watched examples of debates in the political scene and seen that those weren't really debates. So we know what a true debate is and what an alternative debate... Maybe I'll use that term, an alternative debate.
Alternative debate, yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Well, I just want to, I want to thank you all. And I think that both Giselle and Danielle, I have to tell you, as someone who has debated in many settings, I can honestly tell you, I have not had to do a mock debate in four minutes at a public school board meeting.
That's right.
So to commend you for the work that you all have done in preparation, but also for the courage of coming out and demonstrating through your mock debate tonight. I have two certificates of acknowledgement for you. So if you could both come forward to receive them.
That's great. So it is now, my great pleasure, to congratulate Coach Lawrence Smith and the Dunbar Poets Varsity Football Team on winning their 10th state championship by defeating the Fort Hills Sentinels by a score of 30 to 26, close game, at Navy-Marine Corps Memorial Stadium on December 2nd. Can we give them a round of applause, please? And I want to let everyone know that we will be honoring the entire Poets team at the Board meeting on January 9th. But I didn't want to wait to congratulate them and to let them know that city schools is proud of their achievement and can't wait to celebrate everyone in person. Moving on, I also want to report on where we are with our school policing policy. Over the past several months, staff have been working with the Maryland Center for School Safety to develop a new school police policy for city schools. Now, this is an important issue for the district and our school community. And I really want to commend staff for reaching out to student groups, advocates, and other community organizations for their input. This was not an insular process that took place in a back room somewhere. Staff worked incredibly diligently to make sure that we had voices from a variety of constituents, including students. I also want to point out that our school police, under the direction of Chief Hamm, have been working incredibly hard over the past year to balance the security and safety of our schools, students, and staff with the need to respect the rights of everyone in the school community. This is a challenging time in our city and our nation to do this. And I want to commend Chief Hamm and all of our officers for their genuine efforts. Absolutely. Their genuine efforts and progress in achieving that goal and for their collaboration with staff on helping to develop a new policy. I also want to invite everyone to attend a Board Forum on Tuesday, January 16th, where we will be presenting the proposed new policy, which reflects national best practices and the engagement that I just described. We hope to receive input from everyone in the larger community at that forum because we do genuinely want your feedback. Please make sure that you come out. That process will continue with an initial presentation at the February 20th Policy Committee Meeting, followed by public sessions on April 24th and May 22nd, which I also encourage everyone to attend. We have deliberately and intentionally extended the process, approval process, over four months to ensure that our new school police policy and subsequent regulations are developed in an environment of maximum transparency and that they reflect input from as many members of the school community as possible. I look forward to seeing everyone at the Board Forum on January 16th... Oh, 17th, thank you. I appreciate that. January 17th. Don't miss your opportunity, please, to express your opinion on this important matter. And then I do want to take a moment. I want to take this opportunity to address any misconceptions that may still be circulating over how city schools approaches the use of materials beyond our curriculum, including the recent larger community discussion about the use of the book Buck. One thing that I want to be clear about is that we know, I know, that teachers who spend every day with our students know how to connect with our students. Bringing additional supplemental materials into the classroom to help make connections to the core curriculum is what high-quality, highly-committed teachers do. We want teachers who think critically about how to best engage students in meaningful educational experiences, expanding upon core texts that align with specific goals, objectives, and state standards. Teachers can and should find additional resources, including portions of larger texts such as Buck, to support the core concepts and texts that are part of the curriculum to provide these rich and meaningful opportunities. City schools supports the exercise of academic freedom in our schools. And likewise, city schools recognizes that our schools are public schools, schools that serve an entire public. And we are additionally committed to making sure that parents and families have a process by which they can not only weigh in, but where there may be a need, also find options that better match the needs and desires of their particular family and student. It is our responsibility as city schools to ensure a clear process for the incorporation of supplemental tasks with challenging or controversial topics that empower educators and allow families to maintain their particular values and approaches to curriculum. This process will be formalized in coming weeks. And we acknowledge that the lack of clarity can sometimes, as has been most recently experienced, cause confusion. We commit to having a formalized process in coming weeks. And this process will be predominantly based and grounded in school-level decisions between teachers, principals, and their communities. And then finally, I would like to invite our Chief Human Capital Officer to the Board for tonight's PEP Agenda, Mr. Jeremy Grant Skinner. Thanks, Jeremy.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Santelises. There is one appointment this evening. Ashley Stewart, currently Senior Associate for Talent and Leadership Development at the Annie E. Casey Foundation, is appointed Executive Director, Talent and Organizational Development, effective February 1st, 2018.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. And I will also say that I think it's important for folks to know that Ashley Stewart comes to city schools with nearly 20 years of combined educational experience, ranging from being an 11th-grade math and science teacher all the way to being a speechwriter, to the Secretary of Education, to being a U.S. diplomat. For the last 10 years, Mr. Stewart has been directly engaged with education and leadership work based here in Baltimore City, as you heard Mr. Grant Skinner reference. We are thrilled to have him on board to help with our organizational development of leadership. Again, another key linchpin within the blueprint. And then finally, at the last Board meeting on November 28th, the Board approved the interim appointment of Ms. Carolyn Cole as interim principal of the Mount Washington School until the end of this school year in June. Before she retired from city schools in 2013, Ms. Cole served as principal of Roland Park Elementary Middle School from 2006 until 2013. Earlier in her career, she was once the Teacher of the Year at West Baltimore Middle School. She earned both bachelor's and master's degrees here in Baltimore from Morgan State. And we appreciate Carolyn's return from retirement to lead in this capacity for the...
8.07, FY 18, Quarter 1 Budget Amendment Request. 8.08, FY 18, FY 2018, General Fund Supplemental Appropriation E-Rate Program. 9.01, Fund for Educational Excellence, Fair Student Funding. 10.01, Uptown Press Inc., Graduation Program Printing. 10.02, Maryland School for the Blind. 10.03, STEAM Tutors. 10.04, American Reading Company. 10.05, New Teacher Center. 10.06, Kennedy Krieger Fellowship Program, Kennedy Krieger Institute. 11.01, Airtech Refrigeration and Mechanical Contractors. 13.01, Multiple Vendors for Snow Removal. 13.02, Towson Mechanical. 13.03, Hiri International. 13.04, Simpson of Maryland. 13.05, Media Center Renovation. 13.06, Interline Brands Doing Business as Supply Works. 13.07, Multiple Vendors Grass Mowing Contract. And 16.01, Pessin Cats Law LLC. Okay, then. And just so the members of the general public know, these items, the majority of these items were reviewed in detail at other public meetings, including recent Operations Committee... I didn't say 1304?
Yeah.
Okay, let me finish my thought. The majority of these items are reviewed in other public meetings, Operations Committee and Teaching Learning, and so those deliberations are available online, and so that's why sometimes there's not as many questions, but it looks like we do have one item that we want to pull. Sorry, 1304. If you can just say what the questions are, so the staff can...
Great. Where's the staff?
No, we don't do that just yet. We'll just say now, and then we'll come back to it later.
Yeah, I have questions about the, not the course, but all about the asbestos and the roofing and the process and the safety of the staff and the students. That's my question.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks.
So, we'll do public comment. So, we'll do public comment now, and we'll come back at a later point in the meeting, and we'll vote on the items that will pass by consent, and then we'll have a discussion of the Simpson contract. No problem. Okay. Let's see, with that, I'd like to invite first Trish Garcia-Pilla from PCAB.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners and Administrators and everyone. Just really quickly, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate. I wanted to just quickly say we did have a presentation on the DBC, which is up for First Reader, and gave feedback on that a couple meetings ago. And then our next meeting is January 18th, so we will not meet publicly again until the New Year, so we will see everyone publicly in the New Year. We have a, our Board has a meeting with Dr. Santa Lisa's on Thursday evening that we're excited about, and I'd also like to say that PCAB would love, love, love to come to your school and explain what we do. So, if any school leaders, parent leaders at any schools listening would like us to come to your school and talk about what PCAB does, we would love to do that, and please reach out to us. You can find us on the website at baltimorecityschools.org/pcab, and our email is pcab@bcps.k12md.us. So, please reach out to us. We'd love to come and visit you. So, thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Any questions for Trish? Our next guest is Cynthia Schoquist, representing the BTU. Did I say that right? That means no.
It's Schoquist, but...
Schoquist, okay.
That was so close that it counts.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Santa Lisa's, teachers, parents, and students. I am Cynthia Schoquist. I am the Field Rep for the Baltimore Teachers Union. This is Sandra Davis, who's the Chair of the PSRP Chapter. We'll be speaking on behalf of Marietta English this evening. I'd like to start by saying that there are many issues that the staff have identified that are currently plaguing our members, including observation policy, visitors disrupting class time, lesson plan expectations, certifications, and, as my colleague raised at the last School Board Meeting, class sizes. We would have brought them to the School Board this evening to discuss in detail, however, the most pressing issue at this time are the current school closures in Baltimore City. And with that, I would like to read this statement from President Marietta English. "The recent announcement about proposed school closures for six Baltimore City schools, many of which are represented here tonight, is extremely alarming. These schools have been part of our communities for decades and have proved to be a learning pathway for thousands of childrens in these communities. The basis for school closures has been blamed on decreasing enrollment and low test scores, but I'm not sure if the Board is looking at the full picture. The most successful schools have stable leadership in place, able to carry out the vision for these schools. The leadership is able to create an environment that encourages parent and community involvement and fosters opportunities for these students' academic success. A high turnover rate of leadership, i.e. assigning new principals every school year, laying off and surplusing staff, support staff, teachers included, placing long-term subs in the classroom, creates a school that ends up abandoned and its own island without the resources to meet their needs. The schools on your list are vital entities to their communities, and many have been for decades. If these schools close, the children will no longer have a place where they are able to attend school in their communities. They have to travel a longer distance to get to their destinations, and for many families, that's just not an option. Closing neighborhood schools would increase the number of children who do not go to school simply because they cannot get to school at the appropriate start time. This always snowballs into a huge problem. I implore the Board seriously to reconsider the closure of Reginald Heights Elementary Middle, Dr. Carter G. Woodson Elementary, Coldstream Park Elementary Middle, Friendship Academy of Engineering and Technology, Knowledge and Success Academy, and William Pinderhugh's Elementary Middle School. The health, life, and growth of too many children is on the line. Let us look to providing the resources to these schools in need in order to help them be successful." Thank you."
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. There are other official organizations who haven't signed up, so I want to read the list, and if anybody is here on behalf of them that just didn't sign up. PTA Council of Baltimore City, AFSMI, Pizzaza, Cub, Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, and CCAC. Okay, you're always welcome to sign up. We'd love to hear from you. I'd now like to open the floor for public comment from the people who have signed up. First, we'd like to welcome our good friend, Kim Trueheart.
Three minutes is not enough. Okay, censorship. Proud to hear that we don't censor books and literacy in this school district, and that we're going to have a policy to make sure that's clear to folks, that censorship is not what we do. Had a great meeting last Thursday with a gentleman by the name of Dr. Jay Perman, and I went in with a nice, long list of stuff that I wanted him to do on the west side of town, got some commitments from him. As I mentioned previously, I am working with parents in a real, real different kind of way, and I said, "I need my parents to have access to the dental school." And he said, "Sure." Right? It was that easy. He asked me, "Do we have a swimming pool at Liberty?" And I said, "Yes, but it's an outdoor pool." And he says, "Have you looked at the stats on our children, black children, who die because they don't know how to swim?" And it alarms him. And he says, "How about if I send you a swimming instructor up there to your pool at Liberty?" And I said, "Really?" I said, "We got lifeguards, we don't have instructors." And he said, "Really?" So, he's going to send me a swim instructor two days a week to teach little black children in my neighborhood how to swim. Love it. I'm also proud that he wants our kids to go down to the university indoor pool in the fall and winter times. We're also going to talk about some other things that I do want him to consider doing, and the main ask that I had of him was, "I want a great middle school on the west side of Baltimore." And he looked at me, and I said, "You know, like the one they got on the east side with Henderson-Hopkins? I want you to be my partner on the west side." That's the bad news part, because he said, "I really can't do that. I'm a state institution, and I really can't muster the resources." And I said, "Okay, I'm not giving up, though, because I still want a great middle school on the west side of town, and I'm going to get it." Okay? Let's see. This thing about closing 26 schools to get a billion dollars, let's get it over with. The emotional strain that is going on in our community, and not to mention amongst the staff, we need to get it over with. Let's name the schools, get it over with, the pain, the agony, the crying, and all of that, it needs to happen. Progress. We can't maintain legacy stuff when there's a pathway to a great future. And I'm struggling with this, because I don't want to be in this conversation that goes on at seven, right? And I've tried to avoid being involved in those conversations, and it's critically important that they happen, but God, it's so heartbreaking. And let's do it quickly if we have to. And I think that the last thing I want to say is, holidays are amongst us. I'm a Christian. I'm going to wish you all a Merry Christmas, okay? And I hope that our babies are safe and warm, and that we will show them how much we really love them, right, over this holiday season. Blessings to everyone.
Thank you, Kim. And next, I'd like to welcome Keisha Goodwin.
I need you all to consider...
Could you use the microphone?
Can you consider Boy Scout troops and Girl Scout troops who want to do colors on your agenda in the future? I have a, yeah, to do the colors in the beginning of the opening.
Oh, the...
Right. Because right now, you're limiting it to ROTC, and I've got a Boy Scout troop that would love to come.
Fabulous. Thanks, Kim. If AJ says we can do it, that means we can do it.
We will do it.
Not to mention Dr. Santa Lisa's and Allison.
Minor detail. I have merely a footnote.
Just saying. Sorry, Keisha, you're up.
Good evening. As an involved parent, I am concerned with the deficit cut to Leaf Walk of 1.6 million last year, and then a 600,000 cut for low enrollment. Leaf Walk has lost about $2.2 million. As a result, our middle school lacks enrichment and after-school activities. Our male students have nothing to do. This has set the stage for students to create their own fun activities without guidance. Need I say more? With this in mind, Leaf Walk still hasn't received support for our ESOL students. The only speaking staff member was a per educator who was surplus. How can ESOL students receive a thorough education when funds are inadequate, thus having inefficient ESOL program? Middle school students doesn't have a computer technology teacher, yet is expected to do well on computer assessments and tests, type papers, create PowerPoint presentations, et cetera. We need our students to be college and career-ready. We expect and deserve a well-rounded education. According to ESSA, every district should have a computer science plan. Can you please email me the district computer science plan? Leaf Walk is on the verge of starving. So, we have some schools that are starving for resources while others are being fed plenty. They have surpluses. The PTO is prepared to do what it needs to do to make sure that the equity is a priority for this district and our school, because that's what our students deserve. One time today. Are there any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Keisha? Thanks, Keisha. We always appreciate that you elevate these issues. Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome our next guest, James Williams, Sr.
Good evening. I was sent here today because I speak for the poor and the needy, and I'm guided to do that. Defend the poor and fatherless. Do justice to the afflicted and needy. Psalms 82, verse 3 and 4. Now, show me the money. When I come here, I'll take a day off work. I lose a day's worth of pay, but it's worth it, because I'm blessed in the end. I did a review of school budgets, individual school budgets. If you haven't seen... So we have some schools that are starving for resources while others are being fed plenty. They have surpluses. The PTO is prepared to do what it needs to do to make sure that the equity is a priority for this district and our school, because that's what our students deserve. I'm on time today. Are there any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Keisha? Thanks, Keisha. We always appreciate that you elevate these issues. Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome our next guest, James Williams, Sr.
I was sent here today because I speak for the poor and the needy, and I'm guided to do that. Defend the poor and fatherless. Do justice to the afflicted and needy. Psalms 82, verse 3 and 4. Now, show me the money. When I come here, I'll take a day off work. I lose a day's worth of pay, but it's worth it, because I'm blessed in the end. I did a review of school budgets, individual school budgets. If you haven't seen them, you need to look at them, because there are a lot of things in the school budgets that are unexplained. And I met with the chief of schools and asked, "Who reviews the school each individual school budget, and who approves it?" Well, the ILED and the principal. Now, I've been doing this 22 years, so I know what can go on when principals say they have parent input. And that can be flunky parents come and eat cookies and doughnuts, and they approve the budget, and then the administrator does what they want. So I'm going to give you all some numbers today. We have a school 413 that has $20,000 in athletic and sports equipment in the budget. Cell phones, $3,500, and field trips, $5,000. Now, who approved that $20,000 for sports equipment? That school has three grade levels. These school budgets need to be reviewed by ILEDs before, they need to be thoroughly reviewed, item by item, because we have lots of schools that have adequate money for summer schools, and some have none. We have a school that has $141,000 in other professional services, school-funded. Just saying, other professional school services means nothing to people who look at that. When I met with your chief of schools, he agreed with me that there needs to be a proposed budget, an actual budget, and then a revised budget made for student population changes. That needs to be put up on the website, okay? We have a lot of schools that have no funding for school trips, zero. Edgecombe Circle, Dr. Martin Luther King, Govens Elementary, and Brim's Lane Elementary. Those schools don't have, they have $0 in their budget for school trips and transportation. Why is that? We got a lot of kids in Baltimore who are needy. They don't get out of their neighborhoods unless they go on a school trip. So due diligence, do your job. Get these kids exposed to the real world, okay? Everybody here needs to look at individual school budgets. If you don't, you're failing in your responsibilities. That's all I have to say. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No, I would just say, Mr. Williams, that I think, one, the review that you've done and the flags that you've raised in each school, right, should be part of the process that the school family council engages in with the principal in terms of the finalization of the budget. If there are places, which I do hear from time to time, I'm not naive, if there are schools where parents feel as if they are not being given the explanation for those budget items, like the ones that you have highlighted, if parents don't feel like they have access to reviewing the final budget and being able to ask questions, they should call our office immediately, particularly as we, hold on, sir, let me finish. Particularly as we enter the new budget season, that is a flag that would be helpful for staff if there are parents who have had particularly challenging circumstances as part of the budget process. And then to your point about your conversation with the chief of schools, part of what we are doing this year is queuing up those flags for the budget review process this year, because we also know that there needs to be a level of responsibility and accountability at the school level for the school-based, the student-based funding that the district has had for the last 10 years. So I just want to, I'm saying that so that you know that I hear you, that there are processes. I have had parents in the past flag when they do not feel as if they have transparent communication and access during the budget process, and we deploy staff to those schools to make sure that those parents have access. And like I said before, the chief of schools, the chief financial officer, myself, and the chief of staff are reviewing the budget review process to make sure that ILEDs are doing the due diligence around their questioning and support of principals and the leadership teams as they enter the budget process.
There needs to be conscience for some line items in each school's budget, okay? If you don't do that, then you're going to have continual misspent funding, and nobody's going to trust the money that's being spent.
Yeah, but I will say this to you, sir, that in some cases, what happens is when the community can actually sit down with the principal and get an explanation for the line item in terms of what is being spent, it no longer, right, it no longer is questionable. Part of why it's questionable is because people don't have the information of how it's spent. So I also want to be clear that not every line item that is lumped in every school has the same level of confusion or lack of knowledge in each school building. There are also schools that you can go to in this district, take some of those same line items, and the parents that sit on the school family council, and the larger school community. And I know, because I actually attended school budget meetings last year, where parents in those communities actually did know what those line items are. So what I'm saying to you is I hear you, I think your points are well taken, but I also want to be sure that you and the public know that there is a means by which to flag when parents do not feel that they have the information about what the school budget corresponds to, and that not every line item that someone does not understand equates mismanagement of funds, because there are schools that have those same line items, and every parent can tell you what they correspond to. The goal is the transparency. So I just want to make sure that we're not conflating two issues.
Transparency, that's why I said, those three different budgets, that needs to be available. Now, everybody doesn't have a computer either, and a lot of administrators don't schedule meetings that's beneficial, convenient to parents, because parents work. We are a struggling city here.
Absolutely. And if you flag that for me, sir, sir, if you flag that for me, as we did from four schools last year, where I received a flag from parents at those schools that the budget meetings were not being held at convenient times, we made sure that those budget meetings were rescheduled. So my message remains the same. If you flag, and any parent listening here tonight, any parent who is in this audience, when there are flags, we address those flags. I did it at four schools last year, where parents said, "There was one time we did not have access." We made sure that those schools had additional time. So I just want to reinforce that you have the right, like every other parent and community member, to have access. Where you do not feel you have that, you certainly should flag, and I have, in the last year and a half of being here, have flagged issues for ILEDs. They are sitting in this room, and they can tell you where there are budget questions. I flag it. It's their responsibility to follow up on it, and we will do it continually. So I encourage you to flag and to follow through. And where you feel like you are not getting responsiveness, you let me know, and as we have in the past, we will do it again if parents do not feel they have access. So I just want to make sure we're not conflating mismanagement where parents don't have access, because it's not the same thing.
That's true. That's very true, and I appreciate that information. It's extremely beneficial to get out to the public, that they, if they run into an issue, they need to contact someone. But remember, information that's, when people call down here, is a nightmare unto itself, okay?
Could you say that again?
The information center, when you call down here to get, to speak with someone, and then you get forwarded, you get cut off, this phone system down here is a nightmare.
So why don't I streamline it for you? Any parent that wants to be part of the budget process, that the school family council, right, as part of our policy, has access to, two places to call. Number one, the Family and Community Engagement Office. Is Sabrina Sutton here?
Yeah, she's here.
So Sabrina, can you stand?
I know Sabrina quite well.
Great, I'm just making sure everybody does.
No, I know. I have her card.
I understand. I'm just making sure everybody does. So Sabrina Sutton can help you, number one. And if at any point, a parent feels like, and any of the parent representatives from PCAB can let you know, if you feel like you are not getting the response you need, and you are getting forwarded and forwarded, that is why, Karen Lawrence is the ombudsman, right?
I have her card, too.
Very good. So we'll make sure now the general public...
I know all of them. The other parents don't know them.
Exactly, which is why I'm glad you're here saying it, and which is why I am giving a response and not just sitting here, because I want to make sure that the public knows that there is access. And like I said, there were four schools last year where parents did not feel like they were being let into the budget process, and we intervened immediately. So I encourage parents to continue, and you as well, to continue to flag.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I want to second that emotion. We appreciate Mr. Williams when you come and raise these things, because sometimes that's the only, you know, that's good information for us, too.
I get sent, so I have to come. Understand?
That's cool.
I work for the big boss, okay? So when I get sent, I got to go.
I do, too. I do, too. I do, too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Last speaker for this portion of the evening is Hope Memms.
My name is Hope Memms, and I am a Class of 1989 alumni from one of the greatest educational institutions here in Baltimore City. Surprisingly enough, that's Frederick Douglass Senior High School, number 450. I come before you this evening to share my concerns regarding what feels like a complete abandonment of Douglass. I read the November 18 News article identifying Douglass as one of 13 schools in Baltimore City where there wasn't one student to pass the math portion of the park assessment. To read this was disheartening and disturbing. Allow me to share some facts about Douglass that need to be heard. Douglass has had a principal for three of the past six years. Out of all of the historic schools in Baltimore City, Douglass is the only one without an academic criteria compared to City, Poly, Dunbar, Carver, and Western. An alarming number of students arrive in the ninth grade at Douglass on either the second or third grade level. This means the feeder schools are not being educated or prepared for high school, but they are expected to compete. Now, the points that no one is talking about with regard to Douglass are, Douglass has advanced placement. Three were added to their curriculum since 2016. There is dual enrollment with Coppin State University. The former band director from when I attended Douglass just returned to Douglass to bring the program, the band program, back. The music program has always been a staple at Frederick Douglass Senior High School. In June 2017, 163 students graduated. 109 of them were accepted into colleges or universities. The Law and Leadership Program will be signing a MOU with Baltimore City College to become the only certified law and leadership program that will have the capability to certify students as intake specialists upon completion of the program and graduation from Douglass. My question to this board is, how did we get here? Douglass has such a rich history, and to let that go to waste would be a travesty. What is this board going to do to help us protect our legacy at Douglass? We need resources. We need them today, and we're counting on each and every one of you to help us find them. I have about 30 seconds left. I will say this. I did my due diligence, and I took the opportunity to look at the bio for each and every one of you sitting in this room, sitting on this board. You're very, very highly educated. Collectively, we certainly can find out how to fix Douglass Senior High School. I've always been told, even in a work setting, don't go after the small things, the low-hanging fruit. Go after the big stuff, the things that you, when you lay down at night, you will feel proud that you accomplished improving Frederick Douglass Senior High School. We've gone from one of the highest-ranked schools in Baltimore City to almost the lowest. It would behoove each and every one of you, every single person that's an alumni of Douglass, to allow that to continue. So I ask you, what will you do to help us improve Frederick Douglass Senior High School? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to call for a motion on the consent agenda items that people had no questions on, which is everything but 13.04. Motion by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner High Cupboard, all in favor. Commissioner Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima. Seven approve, two absent, one abstention. Now, I'd like to invite staff, I assume from the facilities, from operations, who can talk to us about, and have Commissioner Bondima raise her questions about the Simpson of Maryland contract related to the roof replacement at Rosemont pre-K to 8.
I'm Cindy Smith, Director of Design and Construction for Facilities.
Good evening. I'm Alice Watson, Director of Health and Safety.
Shout out here. Great.
You can let them know what your questions are.
Oh, good. My question has nothing to do with the course. My question of, after reviewing, what are you going to be doing over at the school? I was greatly concerned, and maybe you can answer this question for me. I do know a lot about abating asbestos. I do know a lot. I am a certified asbestos abater. Haven't done it in many years, but I'm familiar with it. And I do see, when you wrote in the document about the process that you're going to be going through to do that, but what I'm concerned about, first, I have a question. When you say you're going to be working on the roof, is that for the whole building, the entire school building?
It's the entire roof.
Okay, because knowing what the process of abating is for asbestos, I'm concerned that it's said that the work would be done in the evening, but you know what asbestos is like, what it looks like, and how it feels, and what happens when you start moving it around. You get, it gets dusty, and I'm wondering, will you be closing down in the school? How will you protect the children and the staff? Because asbestos moves around. Once you start fooling with asbestos, unless you're going to enclose it, and you can help me here, unless you're going to enclose it, like, for example, you're going to cover it up and not remove it, if you're going to be removing it, the asbestos is going to fall, and it's going to hit the floor. I'm just wondering if you could just tell us briefly.
Yes, generally, shall I take this? Generally, when asbestos abatements are performed inside the buildings, there are containment set up inside the interior spaces.
But if you're going to do the whole building, how are you going to contain it, the whole building with the, the whole building? I don't, I'm not clear.
Can I clarify real quick? It's the roofing. The deck stays on, so it's the roofing, it's the asphalt membrane.
The deck stays on.
The deck is remaining.
Oh, okay.
Will be above the building. It's actually outside of the building. It's not inside the building.
Because there are different processes. You can completely remove it, or you can contain it. And I needed to know if you were going to completely remove it. If you were going to completely remove it, you would have to move everybody out of the building.
The roofing will be removed, not the roof deck. So it will be above the deck that will be removed, and it will be removed.
And they're using wetting methods to remove the asbestos, the layers.
So it's going to be, you know, all pretty much hand demolition. The equipment's going to be with the water as they do the cutting, so that it's keeping everything damp, so that there's no dust that can be flying around. It's about four times as long as your normal removal for the roofing, because it's all by hand, rather than with the large pieces of equipment that would normally be removing it, and, you know, bagged and tagged and contained in, you know, the normal ways, and removed from the site, as well as air testing, air monitoring, every day after they're done with the work, so that we can make sure.
And then the inspector will check to see that it's contained.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondima. Can I have a motion to approve item 13.04, Simpson of Maryland? Can I have a motion to approve item 13.04, Simpson of Maryland? Moved by Commissioner Chinia, second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioner Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, seven in favor, two absent, one abstain. Terrific, thanks. What I'd like to do now, I'm going to read a list of the upcoming meetings. Just as a reminder, some of them have been referenced tonight already. Oh, we have a presentation?
There's one presentation, yes, ma'am.
Okay, never mind. I didn't think we were doing that until... Okay, so we'll have a presentation on the Board Policy DPC, Annual Operating Budget Development and Adoption. My apologies. I didn't forget you, John. I just was jumping ahead.
That's quite all right. I'm John Walker, Interim Chief Financial Officer. And what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give you an update on the first reader of a proposed change to Board Policy DPC, which is the Annual Operating Budget Development and Adoption. This is just a little bit of a background on why the policy was originally formulated, and it's to ensure that we're good stewards of the district's resources. The challenge that we had is the current policy has nothing in it that addresses the fair student funding model and any type of regular evaluation of that model to the board. As part of this process, we contacted some of our community stakeholders, PCAB, the Charter Advisory Council, and all of our district bargaining units, and we are awaiting responses and comments from each of those. This is the proposed change. The proposed change is that we will add a Section 4 implementation strategies, which will say that at least once every four years, as part of the budget development process, the CEO designees shall perform a review of the funding model used for the distribution of funding resources for our... That's for our traditional schools. In addition, the CEO designees shall present the results of the funding model review to the board for approval. So that's the policy, the addition that we are proposing for the policy itself. And then this is the proposal that we have for, in addition to the administrative regulations, which just gives you the processes that will be used in that review of the funding model. And that's really all I have.
Any questions for John?
Are there any questions?
I mean, I'd just say personally, I appreciate that addition. I think that if you wait too long, things change. People don't have a chance to take a fresh look at it, and I think we're seeing from both the work that ERS has done, the conversations at the meetings, the conversations in the community meetings. It gives people a chance to be reminded of what it is, participate in the discussions, put out their idea. It's been a very helpful process so far this year, so it's a good idea to do it on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, now, I'm going to review a list of upcoming meetings as a reminder. Then we're going to take a five-minute break. People can stretch their legs, leave if they'd like to, and then we're going to reconvene for the second portion of tonight's meeting, the second co-mor hearing to hear public testimony on the proposed changes to the portfolio. So upcoming meetings include... We're doing that right now. I don't have to read that. The Operations Committee will meet on December 19th. At 10:00 a.m. in this room. The Policy Committee is December 19th at 3:30 in this room. Teaching and Learning, the next Teaching and Learning Committee is January 23rd, 9:00 a.m. in this room. The next PCAB meeting, as Trish mentioned, is Thursday, January 18th at 6:30 in this room. And I also want to remind everybody again, we've heard about this earlier, that there will be a board forum on the police policy at 6:00 p.m. in this room on January 17th. With that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner High Cupboard, second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Ashley, I think you can vote on this. Commissioner Chinia, Berkeley, Hassan, High Cupboard, Kashani, Chinia, Frank, Bondima, eight approve, two absent. This portion of the meeting is adjourned. It is, by my watch, exactly 7:45... Excuse me, 6:45. Yeah, I know. I know we all had a heart attack. It's only 6:45. We're going to reconvene at 6:50.